Okay, well, we're just gonna get started. Okay. I'll call to order the public hearing on the inter municipal club liquor license application hearing. I'm Steve Corble, the borough solicitor and present today are all members of council except Ms. Polkowski. And oh Kelnick, sorry Paula, if you're listening, the mayor is also present and so is Borough Manager Jim Price. And Ms. Bolenbacher is attempting to call in, so we'll try to mark the record when or if she is able to make it. Okay, this is a public hearing on an application filed by the Crafton Volunteer Fire Department to permit the inter municipal transfer of a club liquor license. License number C dash five oh three from the Hungarian Social Club of McKeesport. Located in the city of McKeesport at three zero zero four three zero zero six Walnut Street. McKeesport Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, one five one three two. For proposed private club facility on property owned by the Crafton Volunteer Fire Department. At sixty five Station Street, Crafton PA, one five two oh five. This application is made pursuant to the Pennsylvania Liquor Code. Um, this hearing was advertised in the Gazette two point O in pursuant to the requirements of the Pennsylvania Liquor Code. Uh, the task before Borough Council during tonight's public meeting, which will commence at seven fifteen. Uh, is to review and analyze the application, uh, receiving comments from the public and to make a determination as to whether the application should be approved. As requested, approved with condition or denied. At this point, I'll enter into the record, the proof of publication um. For the public notice requirements, correspondence from Charles Caputo dated January twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. Uh, and all attendant application materials. At this point, I'll ask the court reporter to swear in any witnesses and any members of the public wishing to comment during tonight's public hearing.
Just real quick, Ms. Bolenbacher was able to dial in, so she's on there now.
So for the record, council member, um, Bolenbacher is now present on Zoom. So any members of the of the public, I'm going to provide testimony this evening. Or public comment. Okay, then we'll swear him. Okay. Thank you. Uh, is there anybody on Zoom that would like to, uh, participate, um, in public comment this evening? The only attendee to the telephone people.
Correct.
Okay. All right, then. We'll move on. Uh, next is the applicant's presentation.
Um, Chad Snyder.
Okay, okay. Make sure you have the mic on so that people on Zoom can can hear you.
All right. From the Hungarian Social Club to um. Craft and Volunteer Fire Department, they're gonna operate that at sixty five Station Street, which I believe is. Right out here, um, the intent is to operate a club which is different from a restaurant. It will be members only, um, the paperwork still has to be, um, gone through with. The department, there are requirements for a club through them, um, it's gonna be a hierarchy on who can be in, who can be, who's gonna be social members, associate members and actual members. So again, it's not gonna be open to the public, um, they're looking to operate from two to eleven. At least every day on the weekends, maybe later, um, they are gonna serve food, traditional American bar food. Um, and the purpose of this is to mostly, you know, to raise money to create a revenue stream. Um, all the money has been raised by them for the purchase of the license, like I said, they've owned the building. This is indicated since forever, um, so we'll open it up to any questions that anybody would have.
Okay, any questions from Borough Council?
Is there a license at the Volunteer Fire Department, liquor license? Already? No, okay.
Other questions from council?
What is the capacity of the building?
So, so the basis of it is to sell alcohol to the members then, or to just serve alcohol, okay, sell. Sell alcohol to members only, so it will be closed to the public, it will be members only and selling alcohol, okay.
So liquor licenses cover, are there categories of that, or is it all types of liquor?
Yes, it would be all types.
Um, can I ask a question about, um, the. Uh, practice of guests at these private clubs?
Will have, will be members, will be guests in, they'll be limited, how many? Three to two to three guests per member. And once the, uh, members age, the guests have to also.
Thank you. Thanks.
Yeah, yeah, also the after shooting visits. You have to come members, have three visits.
Okay, thank you.
And what's the requirements to become a member?
Well, like the regular members will be required by.
Okay.
Then the associate. We're talking about at the other fire departments, other EMS. And police. Then what also shows social. Or do people get sponsored by?
Other questions from council or the mayor? Seeing none, um, even though nobody was sworn in from the public, this is the opportunity, if anybody in the public would like to make a comment. Any takers? Seeing none, any on Zoom? I guess they can't raise their hands, so. They can on the phone?
I think a star seven is how you raise your hand.
Okay, if anybody on the phone would like to. Raise your hand, please hit star seven, according to council member Marks. Okay, seeing none. Um, unless there's an objection from council or the applicant, I will close the hearing. Um, and then council will consider a resolution on this matter at the regular meeting that will commence at seven fifteen. Okay. Thank you.
It started in eight seconds. All right, it is seven fifteen, we're gonna get started. Call the meeting to order and the first is the flag salute. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. What? We'll call.
Okay, and I'm gonna mention, um, if anybody speaks, um, we did have trouble in the special hearing, hearing people. So make sure you use your mics, and I think that was mostly people in the audience, but just make sure that we use our mics moving forward. Um, with that in mind, uh, Ms. Bolenbacher.
Here.
Mr. Chandler.
Here.
Ms. Capatello.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Marks.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Oliverio.
Here.
Uh, Ms. Pokounik is not available, she logged on.
Nope.
Okay, uh, Mr. Radilla.
Here.
Um, Mayor Perry.
Here.
Uh, Solicitor Corble.
Here.
Engineer Minsterman.
Here.
And myself.
All right, the consent agenda. The first is the approval of the minutes from February twenty third and also the bill list from March ninth, these were both uploaded on the OneDrive. So you need a motion to approve the March ninth, twenty twenty three consent agenda.
Second.
Ms. Capatello, Mr. Mark second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Public comments on agenda items, at this time, citizens may address the Crafton Borough Council on any issue appearing on today's agenda. Only residents and taxpayers of the Borough of Crafton will be permitted to address the council. Comments on non-agenda items, we take at the end of tonight's meeting. Speakers will be permitted to speak for a maximum of three minutes, get groups of people required to designate a spokesperson. To represent them before the council, who may speak for a maximum of five minutes. Please state your name and physical address for the record. Um, so here on site, we have one person, is it agenda item? Or at the end of it? One of them, okay. All right. Charlie.
Same stuff I talked about before, Charlene Cranky, eight hundred Clearview Avenue. About getting the crosswalk and the, um, lines on the, at the top of. Clearview Extension where it connects to Clearview Avenue. I've asked about it and you said it was gonna get done before. Octo- in October and it's not done.
Yep, I just think, um, weather conditions, the conditions of the contractor being able to come. So I, I think once the, once the weather turned and the, and the temperature is too cold to paint or apply the lines, I think it, you know. Just ended it until the weather gets conducive again.
Well, who did the weather ones?
I don't know, um, I'm assuming they were done in, you know, a prior time, maybe these were missed. I'm assuming the contractor missed them then.
Okay.
So we'll just have to make sure that they're, they're done when they get back, you know, when the temperature right. Sorry about that.
Yeah, and then, um. I also. Asked about crosswalks over a year ago. This isn't for the engineer, let's sum up here, crosswalks to the previous manager. And, um, the stop lines in front of the crosswalk where you're supposed to stop, no, like. The, the big one that I see is at Saint Phillips and Steuben Street, but there's others. And he promised it would be done last year and it's still not done, um.
Okay, so are they, they have to be agenda items?
Okay.
Okay. Anybody on the phone, please raise your hand. All right, um, next is the president's report, um, nothing to report. Mayor's report.
Nothing new tonight.
Okay. Engineers' report.
Uh, nothing new to add to the report that's been submitted.
Okay. Solicitors' report.
Nothing new this evening.
Okay. Managers' report.
All right, great, so, uh, first thing I'll talk about today is, um, we acquired, uh, properties. The Borough purchased two lots on March sixth, twenty twenty three, which are designated lots. Um, and I'll read out these numbers, sixty eight H three fifteen and sixty eight L one fifty, um, but those are the lots that are, uh, adjacent to the busway that run from the. Uh, from Crafton Boulevard to the Wildwood, is it the, what's the name of the station? Idlewood, thank you, sorry, the Idlewood Station, um, and the, the Baker family, the prior owner. Is requesting to name those properties, um, and this was part of the agreement, um, Baker's Acres in honor of Clyde H Baker. Mr. Baker is ninety two and owned, um, the property for more than fifty years. His wife requested that it would be wonderful for an opening of this green space, uh, with my husband and family members in attendance to see the sign plaque with his name on it. Um, so with that said, I'd like to have a motion to approve the name Baker's Acres in honor of Clyde H Baker. For the newly acquired properties.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Capatello, discussions?
Are we going to be, um. Preparing or purchasing a plaque for that, is there a plan in place yet?
There is not yet a plan in place, but we can certainly do that, yes.
And is this, um, parcel of land now to be considered available for people to walk on?
We need to be really careful about this because this is not the, the trail part. This is the low lying property, which is probably pretty dangerous, almost all the way through. So.
And, and I think this gets to a, uh, to one of the other sections. That I will be, no, that's okay, this, this will get to one of the other sections that we'll be talking about, and that is, we do have a, um, grant that is pending for a. Trail feasibility study for both that site and the, uh, Creekside site, so, um, to ensure that it's safe. So I would say the answer to that is, no, we do not want people walking on it yet, um, until we can assure that it, it is as safe passage.
So part of the request was, um, from Helen, that his wife is to have that have a plaque and also a ceremony. Um, dedicating the plaque or unveiling the plaque, um, there for, for him, um. As a ninety two year old person, so pretty, pretty soon.
So, did we commit to a timeframe? I mean, I, I'm wondering when, you know, wondering where you would put a plaque and if we went through that. Whether it wouldn't invite people to think that it's a place to be used. I mean, you know, I, I recall that we talked about offering. Naming, but I was really surprised to see that we have a very specific request and we think something's gonna happen right now.
This was the request of, of course, the, the naming rights were part of the agreement. But the plaque and any ceremony, of course, is at the. Call of council.
So there, there is a rather unofficial trail that is fairly flat. That is largely on property that we do own, but.
No, it's not. No, it's not. It is owned by, um. Thank you.
Sorry, it's owned by Pitway Corporation, it's an old, uh, trolley line right away, I believe. Of some sort. Um, we wrote to them. A year ago. Or so. Uh, asking if they would be interested in. Disposing of the property to the borough and, uh, we have not heard, um, from them at all.
So I, I started sharing the screen too, so just to clarify for anybody watching or keeping an eye, we, these two plots of land right here. Next to this green line, which is the trail everyone's talking about, these are the two lots. That are up for discussion that were purchased.
Right, the trail is not an official trail.
Correct, that trail is owned by a private entity and we don't really have any.
We, we own a piece of it, there are two parcels there, we own a piece of it, and then the portion from, yeah, roughly there where your cursor was. Which is roughly on par with, is that Ewing Road down towards Woodlawn, we do not own.
Okay, so this top piece right here, and then we added these two lots here. And then kind of this two thirds of the trail down this way are not borough owned. And today.
I believe the bakers felt like they owned that. Because the comments that I had received were that we walked on our trail during that, that time period, so I believe there was a belief that they actually owned that.
But they do not.
Right.
They do not, and the other thing that I would like to point out, as long as we're talking about that trail. Um, although that's not the business at hand, but it's starting to get very, um. Undercut. Along there and there are places where it's getting very narrow. It looks to me like the utility has been through there recently, I was, I actually was down there a week or so ago. And, um, so there's been heavy equipment down there. Um, and some utility, um. Activity, so I, I think there's some real, I think there are some serious concerns about safety and liability. Along there, and you know, as long as we don't own that trail, that trail part, but, um, you know, that part of the liability isn't ours. But we really do need to be thinking about that.
If we were to put a plaque in any. Near term before any more substantial work is done, we would want to make sure it was along a portion that we. Do own. And that it would identify the land as, as. Baker's Acres, but not invite anyone into it because those two parcels are very, very steep, they are next to the. Walking area, but not, we wouldn't want people going in, going off the side of the hill.
There's a creek there too, right, it's the whole creek, yeah. Right. Right. There's a little space next to a, the trail, which is like that, so the motion here is actually just for the naming rights. What we can do is if we want to do, maybe have our assistant Borough Manager or Assistant, um, Borough Manager or Borough Major. Check it out and come with maybe a recommendation for the next meeting regarding a plaque or, um, any type of ceremony.
Noted, we will look into that.
Any other, so the motion currently as it stands is to approve the name Baker's Acres in honor of Clyde H Baker. For the newly acquired properties, that's all that's on the, the motion right now.
We do have a motion and a second too.
Yes, yes, so we're in the discussion and then we'll, we'll do the vote. Mr. Mark.
What's the total, uh, like acreage of those two lots, is it actually more than one acre?
It is just over an acre.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Bolenbacher.
Aaron, was that for or against?
I said aye.
Okay, great. Okay, motion passes.
Okay, moving on to the next item in my report, um, uh, is regarding the special election, I'm sorry, the special hearing that was, uh, held before this. Uh, regarding the intermunicipal transfer of a Pennsylvania club liquor license. From the Hungarian Social Club of McKeesport to the Crafton Fired, uh, Volunteer Fire Department and their property at sixty five Station Street. Um, with that, I will, I'd like to get a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty three dash six zero six. For the inter municipal transfer of a Pennsylvania club liquor license. Number C dash five oh three from the Hungarian Social Club of McKeesport at three thousand four dash six Walnut Street. In McKeesport PA, one five one three two, to the Crafton Volunteer Fire Department at sixty five Station Street, Pittsburgh PA, one five two zero five.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Chandler, second is Mr. Marks, discussion?
So this still, um. Technically is to go to like the liquor control board and stuff for approval, right?
That's correct. Before they'll process it, the borough has to approve it.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passing.
Okay, thank you, um, and then just a few notes, um, from the plant, well, actually, and a formal request from the planning commission. Um, uh, I was at the planning commission, Ms. Capatello could not be there, so I'm reporting out on this tonight. Um, form, uh, the, the planning commission did formally request that council request trail right away access from CIT. Um. To build a switchback trail from the CIT Meyer Middleton Fields parking lot through the Crafton Creekside property to Ewing Road. This request would require no assistance from Public Works, but would require guidance from Gateway to ensure. The property boundaries are Crafton owned and the route is viable.
So can, can we, um. Split that into two pieces? Because there, there are two requests here, there's first, the formal request that we request, the form. Requested there twice, formally request that council request trail right away access. Um, and then the second portion talks about how that will be. Dealt with once we get access, could we perhaps discuss those as, as two separate pieces?
Sure, yeah, we can, do we wanna talk about the first, which is asking for rail, trail right away access from CIT? I think there was an interest from, um, the plant, from members of the planning commission. To, uh, move this forward as quickly as possible and even having a ad hoc trail built by this spring. Um, um, and so, but at the time I was unaware, um, and, uh. Uh, council member Vince, uh, Radilla, I actually brought this up in the meeting, asking if we had had, if we have a trail feasibility study, uh. Active, and I wasn't sure whether that had already, um, or whether that was in process. And it turns out that we are in the process of applying for that, so Rick, if you wanna discuss our feasibility study.
So when you and I spoke earlier, I misspoke, uh, so. There's a couple things, so the, right now there is a trail feasibility study grant application going in on April fifth. We'll hear back on October, and it's for two sections of the trail, uh. From, let's say, the Public Works Facility all the way to the old Duncan Property is one. And the other is up at Clearview, uh, the trail there that then eventually goes toward the city. So those two, the, only those two trails are being applied for, uh, in that grant. Um, what I was thinking of was a prior grant, um. That, uh, we did not get approval for, uh, last fall, uh, just because funds were tight, so. Um, I think it was DCNR, DCED, one of the two that suggested that we resubmit when that grant program comes around again. Uh, but that was for, uh, developing, um. The, the, all the trails, looking at the trails, a trail system through Crafton and. One of the, one of the problems was you have to own the property. So if you're going to develop or assess and build a trail, you have to own the property, so we don't own the CIT Fields properties. So that was, that was a hurdle, so we can't do anything related to the grant or the trail on CIT property unless. They give it or sell it to you. So I know there was some talk of that a while back as well, so none of that was resolved, um. So until you own the property, you really can't apply for a grant, or at least the grants that we've applied for. Um, so that said. If you just look at the request that says, hey, can we request from CIT property to, to build your own trail? The answer is yes, you could, and on the second half of that is. He's, I think he's correct in saying, would have to designate a right of way or, or a piece of property specifically surveyed that we would be requesting. Uh, and then I suppose, uh, you would either design or it sounds like if you say the word ad hoc, that means. Someone's gonna go out and cut some, uh, weeds and, and build a trail, you know, just a makeshift trail, not necessarily a design trail. So, that's my thoughts.
Okay, with that, I will, uh, I'll move on to the next, uh, all right, well, that was for the first piece, um, do we wanna consider both of those pieces, uh, formally requested and we can. Um, move forward, um, we can look into what, what that would take from, uh, from, uh, our side of it if. Um, now that we have that formal request, or how would the council like us to proceed?
So this is asking for trail right of way access from CIT. But the trail would go through Crafton property. So how much, how much is being asked for from CIT, are we, is the request to get access? To, to do a trail on CIT property or to get access at a particular point? To build a trail on Crafton property?
It is ax, it is, um, desire to have right of way access from their parking lot, which is just to link to our. Uh, to our Creekside with the, the Borough's Creekside property, um, and the trail would be built on Borough property. Um, and the trail would be built on Borough property. They are simply would like us to ask for access from their parking lot. So there would probably need to be a partial trail built behind that fourth or that fifth. I'm looking at the screen now, that fifth um, field that is down there by itself, not in the uh, not in the um, Clover, but in that, that separate one. Yeah. If we were to, the idea was to build a trail past that, past that and to our property and then have a switchback that goes from there up to Ewing Road. It was the, was the desire of the request.
So we're talking about getting access to this section of this lot right here.
But that is our property.
Yeah.
And that is in the Parks Plan we've already submitted to do a trail, a nature trail of this kind of sort, switchback. It's, it's very hilly. It's very to it's very sloped. So any kind of trail there would be sort of a natural path with switchback kind of features. That was included in the Parks Plan as a recommendation.
I think the interest was to ask council if we could build that switchback trail this spring before vegetation takes, takes hold. And in a conversation with the engineer um, earlier today, we, we, we had decided, we had thought that it doesn't really, doesn't really matter whether vegetation is there or not. When you're building a trail, that can be done regardless whether there's vegetation. But that was the direct, that was the specific request from the pla, from the members of the Planning Commission.
Is it just that like somebody from the Planning Commission wants to go, wants to go down to the CIT parking lot, onto their property, walk across the baseball field and start cutting into our property, not touch, not actually modifying CIT property. They just want access so that they can walk across.
Correct.
A lot. Oh, okay.
Correct.
I mean that. Sure. Let's save request.
Okay, I can look into uh, seeing what that would take from CIT.
It's not like we're asking them like for us to park heavy equipment down there or something. We just want to let some folk volunteers or whoever go tromp around on the trail and get access from the parking lot.
Well, is there a liability for us though? If we let people go walk through Crafton, a property that Crafton owns, but we have not put a trail there yet. We have not designed any trail or ensured that it's safe to be on. If we let people go walk on it and clear their own trail or their liabilities for us if that trail ends up being unsafe. We could, we have in our Parks Plan to put a proper trail in there. And it'll, we had, we don't have the funds yet to do it, but that's something that is planned and we can continue pursuing. There's someone could certainly walk through it now, but we haven't as a council given formal approval to use that as an unofficial trail. If we do give that approval, are there liabilities for us?
Yes, obviously if somebody would be on the trail and it falls or is injured, then yes, there could be a claim against the borough, but the, the Torque Claims Act may help you there. And we have insurance coverage. Right now, I think uh, just somebody walking through the undeveloped areas, that yeah, there's still liability, but I think you have better defenses than if you're basically inviting people to use a trail. So the short answer is yes. Lawyers can't answer it one.
Jim, did, Jim, did you pick up on a reason why they couldn't access this property from the Creekside Trail? I mean, I know Ewing Road is pretty steep, uh, if you try to cro, like go over the guardrail, like it, it gets crazy steep. But was there a reason they couldn't just go on the trail we already own and access it that way? Is that I haven't actually been on that side of the property?
Uh, my understanding based on the conversation and Vince, you were there too, was that it was uh, very marshy between the trail, between the Creekside Trail that runs along Shertiers Creek and getting to access to, to, to go up that hill. And they thought this would be a quick and easier way to at least put in a partial trail there to start the, to start the ball rolling, I think was the idea.
Say like a partial trail that just doesn't connect through the marshy part? Like what's, is the intent then just to stop at the marsh and go like, oh, it's time to turn around?
Or to go, I think it's to go into, to be able to have access as a trail from Ewing Road into CIT's property.
But then, but then that would be encouraging trail walkers to go into property that's not ours. So unless CIT was okay with that too, I
Well, I think, see, I, I think this request is to ask for a right-of-way, a specific designated legal right-of-way. It would, I would assume could, would come off the parking lot and then go over and access your property. That, that's what it says. That's why I'm reading it, that if they're asking.
So right-of-way for people who are walking the trail to walk across? Well, because it also might encourage folks to go down and park in their parking lot and start walking trails. And I'm not sure how much they'd like that either.
Yeah, and I think that was the main, the main uh, push of the request to see if they would allow people to use that as a stopping point to start walking on a trail that was built on our property. And however, I, I'll just point out that I, I had the same questions, Kirsten, that you had, which is the liability that opens up to if we um, build an ad hoc trail that's not necessarily professionally designed and, and uh, you know, ADA-supported and, and all the other things. So that was my primary concern with uh, with this, with this ask.
I would say I'm the only one talking here, but I, I would say I am fully in favor of a trail in that location. And I think it's already reflected in the Parks Plan as well. But I would strongly prefer that we do it the proper way. I think if, if I'm going to support something as a council member, I would rather know that it's done the proper way. And in the meantime, people are able to walk through the woods if they so choose, but we haven't put our name to it. It makes me a bit nervous to say we're going to do something and we're going to do it poorly. I, I would rather do a proper trail.
Yeah, I'd probably be more comfortable with you just opening up a conversation with CIT, see how they feel about it. But I don't know that we want to go straight to requesting uh, right-of-way to allow trail walkers to park in the lot and walk across the property and then tread off into yeah, something we'd be possibly liable for, but.
Okay, I can uh, I can seek more information and uh, explore. I've already had a few conversations with CIT. And um, actually this brings up a, a side point, um, but just for everybody, CIT is doing their spring cleanup on April first, Saturday, April first at the field. So if you, if anybody wants to come down and help me clean up the field um, with the folks from CIT, I'm sure they would welcome the extra hands. So um, and it's a good way to show a neighborly support for uh, for the work that they do for the kids and folks who play ball here in the, in the town.
What day was that again?
Uh, it's Saturday, April first, and I assure you, it's not a joke. Okay, well, if everybody's okay with it, I can move on to the next point. And that is uh, just official notice that the Planning Commission voted at their February meeting to begin meeting in person um, with a hybrid option, starting in March, where in the past they had been meeting um, for the most part online, although there had been a few in-person meetings. So beginning and starting in March, those meetings will now be held on the fourth Tuesday of the month at six-thirty and they will be held in council chambers.
Um, can you also clarify the link that we have been using for Planning Commission meetings? Is that going to be changed?
Yes, I needed to contact you anyway regarding that. And we also need to talk about where the recordings are for those meetings. That's the only thing I don't have access to right now, but yes, we can discuss. Um, so that, that's the end of my report.
Oh, great. Thank you. Standing Committee reports. So Finance and Administration, Ms. Perry.
I have nothing to report. We're working on rescheduling our committee meetings and I have not had a meeting since then, since the last one.
Thank you. Great. Community Services and Infrastructure, Ms. Capitello.
Sure. We have a multi-municipal zoning project update at the last Planning Commission meeting, the um, February Planning Commission meeting. Uh, the Planning Commission reviewed maps and descriptions um, of the zoning districts, the drafted zoning districts and some of the draft changes that our consultant has suggested. Um, and the Planning Commission and residents who attended that meeting were able to make some suggestions. Um, those suggestions will be provided to Zone Co., our consultant working on our zoning, um, along with the newly annotated maps um, that Mayor Perry has been consolidating, has been consolidating comments received. All of those um, comments received from the Steering Committee, the Planning Commission and residents who attended that meeting will be given to Zone Co. So they can update those draft maps. The manager is working with Zone Co. as well as with Ingram Leadership because this is a multi-ministerial project with Crafton and Ingram together. Um, we're working together to plan a public engagement workshop that will be held at Crafton Community Center in April. And that date is being finalized and will be announced soon. To the last point that Borough Manager made, we do record those meetings and the recording from February is not yet online, but it, it will be soon. If, if anyone would like to watch the recording of the Planning Commission meeting, they are posted on the Borough's website. And that should be up, I would expect in the next week. The next item is the new stop sign location ordinance. Per prior discussions, council has proposed establishing stop intersections at Willard Avenue, at Bar Avenue, Stotz Avenue at East Crafton Avenue, Coulter Street at North Emily Street, Highland Avenue at North Linwood Avenue and Hardy Street at North Linwood Avenue. These were discussed at the last council meeting and are being advertised um, for consideration uh, at the March twenty-third, the next council meeting. Um, and then final item, um, Act one fifty-two, the demolition grant application. The Act one fifty-two Allegheny County Blight Removal Program will be accepting applications for demolition and blight remediation planning. The Borough has previously applied for funding for the demolition of eleven Fountain Street, sixty-four South Grandview Avenue, eighty-two Belvedere Avenue and one sixty-four Fountain Street. Projects are funded to a maximum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Matching funds are not required, but priority will be given where a match is committed. Um, so this is just a public announcement that those applications um, are now being accepted. That's all for my committee.
And now we're going, and now it's with Aaron. I mean, I'm sorry, with Aaron Bolenbacher. Are you able to report out on the upcoming events, the newsletter and the digital sign? Aaron?
Sure. Yeah, I can do that. Um, well, the new, actually, Coletta probably can talk a little more about the newsletter than I can. The articles were assembled and Coletta was working on the newsletter as far as I know. We are still on point for a late March distribution. Is that correct, Coletta?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. Um, digital sign, last meeting, we approved the location of the sign. We, Jim, did we give the contractor the green light to get moving?
Yes, we have just started. Um, they confirmed uh, and we got the final invoice and we are uh, moving forward with uh, looking at construction dates and what are the next steps?
Okay, and the other thing we talked about was having the engineers take a look to see how close we could easily get the sign to the exit sign that's already there. Rick, can you talk about, were they able to go out and take a look and make a decision on that?
No, not yet. I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, and I think that's on us. Actually, I don't think we've given that to you yet. We're waiting, we're wait, yes. So that's my apologies there and that was, that's on us, not on Rick.
Okay, no problem. I'll make sure we take care of that. And then just a couple really quick reminders. Our senior dinner is going to be Saturday, May sixth at the Community Center. Uh, doors open at four-thirty. Dinner service begins at five. Um, it is a Kentucky Derby theme. I did reach out to get the menu. It was being catered by Hamlin's, but I didn't get the menu. Um, so I'm not sure what that is just yet. So I'll update later on that. Um, another reminder, community day cleanup again. I'm sorry?
What, what is the date of that?
The date is Saturday, May sixth.
Saturday. Okay, not Friday.
Correct.
She said Friday, yeah.
Yep. Community Day Cleanup again is happening on Saturday, April twenty-ninth, includes a shredder event, a medicine take-back and dumpsters for larger items. And the final reminder is registration. Yeah.
Yeah, I can add two things to that, actually. Um, uh, the, that also there is the um, Heritage Found, the um, Crafton Heritage Group is going to be selling flowers um, at that event. Um, and that will be, hopefully that announcement will be in the uh, newsletter when it goes out. And we will also be having uh, Mary Luxbacher from the Shade Tree Commission will be doing a cleanup, a cleanup day that day as well. So we have four kind of combined events going on that day. So it'll be a big kind of like spring forward. Thank you uh, for that John, um, uh, event um, on April twenty-ninth.
All right, thank you. And then just the last reminder, registration is still happening for cars crafters and vendors. Do participate in the June tenth Car Cruisin' Vendor Fair. You can either contact the Borough Office or go to our website for more information or to sign up. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Bolenbacher. Commission vacancy, Mr. Chandler.
Yes, so um, to start off, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add an item. Do I need to say what the item is? Um, so the item that I would like to add is an appointment uh, to the vacancy board.
Second. Mr. Mark, second. Um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, you may now amend, add your amended motion.
Uh, so my motion is to appoint Susan O'Connell to the vacancy board uh, for the term that will end uh, on December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
Mr. Mark, second. So any discussion?
Um, I'll just add uh, Mrs. O'Connell, Mrs. O'Connell was um, a previous member of council as well as the former mayor. Um, and she is also a retired attorney. I had a very good conversation with her yesterday, which is why um, I was not able to get this on the agenda ahead of time. But I just wanted to move this along as quickly as possible, just because we are on that thirty-day deadline. Um, and I, we'd be pushing it a little too close with having this on the next agenda anyway, so.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes?
Great. And uh, with that, um, we do have some current positions open still. Those can be found at craftenborough.com slash commissions if anybody is interested in applying for any of these positions. With that, we have uh, one Civil Service Commission alternate seat available, two Library Board openings available, um, one of which I do have an interview for on Monday. Um, we have a zoning hearing board and a zoning hearing board alternate available as well. And then upcoming for twenty-twenty-three, uh, we have one Planning Commission spot available uh, as of four thirteen of twenty-three. Um, one Shade Tree Commission as of three thirty-one of twenty-three, uh, which I do have an interview for that one as well. And then three Recreation Board uh, at the end of December of twenty-twenty-three as well. And that's all for me.
And I believe the Shade Tree is actually open right now.
Yes, yes, sorry, Shade Tree isn't.
Thirty-one is, is now gone. That person, Kate Gaglio resigned from her role, so um, that position is, is open. Anything else?
That's all.
Great, thank you. Cog, so government, Ms. Bolenbacher.
I need to let people know the next cog meeting is next Thursday, March sixteenth. It's going to be at six-thirty at the McKees Rocks Borough Building. So if anybody would like to join me, let me know. That is all.
Great. Thank you. All right, community announcements. Our next council meeting is in two weeks, March twenty-third at seven fifteen. Um, we are still accepting applications for summer employment. That deadline is next Wednesday. These are for um, positions of pool manager, assistant pool manager, concession manager, head lifeguard, lifeguards, cashiers, attendants, concession stand workers and public works, seasonal public works. There are paper applications at the office and also online applications on the website. Again, they all must be received by four o'clock on March fifteenth. I believe the minimum age for some of the positions is only fourteen. So fourteen and above um, for many of the positions. So, public comment. At this time, citizens may address the Crafton Borough Council on any issue. Only residents and taxpayers of the Borough of Crafton will be permitted to address the council. Speakers will be permitted to speak for a maximum of three minutes. And groups of people will, can designate a spokesperson to represent them before council who may speak for a maximum of five minutes. Please state your name and physical address for the record. Charlene, did you want to come up? Okay. It's your time.
Charlene Cranky, eight hundred Clearview Avenue. I just wanted to remind council that. Ask them what they were doing about the no truck sign that has been missing for a long time on Clearview Extension. And there have been trucks that have come up. Which causes a problem on Sterrett Street. And also there have been school buses coming.
We can have the Borough Manager look into that.
Yeah, I will, I will, I will get with our operations manager and, and. See where that, where that stands and I'm not, I'm guessing he's familiar with it, but I'll make sure that. We have next steps at the next meeting. I'll make sure that we report out. Thank you.
Right, we have nobody in person that's on our list unless you want to raise your hand. And on Zoom, you may also raise your hand. Anybody else have anything else?
I just wanted to point out, I've had a couple of conversations with folks here and outside of here. It sounds like garbage bills from Jordan went out sometime in February. And if you got yours, great, make sure you pay it. If you didn't get it. And I know I am one of those unlucky individuals who did not get that bill in the mail. Reach up, make sure you reach out to Jordan so you don't get a surprise in a couple of months with, with some late notices, so. That, that was it.
And also the Crafton Borough tax bills. Everybody should have received those also. Some of those have gone out. Great, thank you. Anybody else? And again, no tax increases were in those, the Crafton Borough. Tax bills. All right, with that, you can adjourn the meeting. It is seven fifty-eight. Thank you, everyone.